Welcome, Mayor, to our March 11th City Council meeting. Prior to the start of our meeting, we often have some important things to talk about. And today, we have Pat Stillwell and Corey Morrison, who have a little announcement to make, and we have a proclamation to make after they're finished. So whoever's going to take the microphone.
All right. I just want to thank you. Thank you to the mayor, thank you to council members. March is National Brain Injury Awareness Month, and on this life, part of our role and responsibility is for, as I see, education, as well as an awareness. There is no cure for traumatic brain injury in March being National Brain Injury Month. With this proclamation, it certainly helps us get out at a level of awareness and education. So we want to thank the city of Des Moines, the mayor, and the council members. So, thank you.
All right. In recognition, and thank you both for coming down. Proclamation reads as follows: Whereas brain injuries affect more than 1.7 million Americans every year, regardless of their age, race, gender, or ethnicity, and result from a multitude of causes, including motor vehicle accidents, falls, abuse, assault, sports and recreation injuries, gunshot wounds, military blasts, aneurysms, carbon monoxide poisoning, alcohol or drug overdose, stroke, oxygen deprivation, congenital abnormalities, infection, or disease. And whereas traumatic brain injury is a continuing factor to a third of all injury-related deaths in the United States, and whereas the risk of brain injury is highest among adolescents, young athletes, and those older than 75 years of age, and whereas approximately 20% of American soldiers who served in Iraq or Afghanistan have suffered a brain injury presenting new challenges for members of the military and their families, and more than 50,000 Iowans live with the consequences of a brain injury. And whereas public awareness of the consequences of brain injuries is critical to the understanding the nature of these injuries, the prevention thereof, and to enhancing the recovery of those with the brain injuries. Now therefore, I, the mayor of the city of Des Moines, on behalf of all of our city council and the citizens of Des Moines, do hereby proclaim, March 2013 is Brain Injury Awareness Month, and I join on with life in calling upon all of our citizens to become educated about the effects and the outcomes of brain injury, and to take all measures to prevent sustaining these types of injuries. And I want to thank both of you for the work that you're doing in this area, and everybody that's related, and let's all be aware of it, and let's give these folks a great big hand. [applause] Prior to the start of our meeting today, we're going to have a quick message invocation from our own city council member, Christine Hensley, and we'll ask everybody that's going to participate with us to stand at this time.
Thank you very much. I wanted to just thank spring, because I was thinking spring before this last snowstorm we had, so I thought it was only appropriate that we thank spring today. The season of spring, weather seems to sing. Lovely, lovely days are coming our ways. The season of spring, blooming blossoming of nature of all kind, let roots unbind. The season of spring, birds unfold their wings, diving high into sky, which one could fly. The season of spring, careful hearts love sting, reaching out towards others. Some persons might bother. The season of spring, nice soundbells ring, new wave, new style, faces have honest smile. The season of spring, a new awakening, busy humanity on earth as if it's a new birth. Listen, listen to my words, the season of spring is near. Now look into your lovely eyes, and one can see spring is about here. Thank you.
I will ask, calling the meeting to order, ask the clerk to take role, please.
County?
Here.
Grease?
Here.
Mahappy?
Here.
Hensley?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right. Item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move.
It's been moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Item three is approving the consent agenda, items three through 32. These are routine items and will be enacted as one roll call vote without separate discussion, unless someone, either a council member or someone from the audience, requests an item to be removed, to be considered separately, or to be clarified. Tonight, those are items, again, three through 32. Item four L, council member Coleman votes no. Item five, council members county and more vote no. Item six B, council member Coleman wishes to speak. Item 21, council member Moore wishes to speak. Item 25, council member Hensley wishes to speak. Are there any other items that anyone would like to have polled for further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a motion for the balance, please?
Move.
It's been moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Items pass. It takes us to item six B. Item six B, these are public improvements. Six is ordering the construction of the following B is the southeast connector paving, southeast Ninth Street to southeast Fifteenth Street, and receiving the bids, 319 of 13, setting the date of hearing of April 8th of 13. And the construction estimate is $7,667,207.85. Council communication number 13-115. Item one under that is approving the letter agreement with Level Three Communications LLC for relocation of fiber optic lines, $93,532. Council communication 13-116. Mr. Coleman.
Thank you, mayor. I just want to make a couple of comments here. This is a project that has had lots of support from many of us. Council member Meyer, for certain, as it winds through his ward, and many of us are excited about it. Over time, many of us have served on the MPO, currently several of us do. Of the 7.6 million, over 4.5 million of those funds come through the STP and other sources at the MPO. And I wanted to point that out, because I take pride in the fact that we've been able to help articulate this project as a regionally significant project, and as a result, it's had overwhelming support there and around the metro area. So this is a project that people see as much more than just a ward or just a city project, and I feel really good about that. I want to point out and recognize especially Jeb Brewer, who continues to work as our city engineer on this project, and making sure that it happens. And most people probably don't realize this, but there's a subcommittee, the MPO, another acronym, it's called the STP Committee, the Surface Transportation Committee, and we're actually represented on that. That's who makes the funding recommendations, and they meet and have very tough deliberations, because there's so many projects going on in the metro area. We're represented by manager Rick Clark, and much of that 4.5 million dollars to fund this project came through that committee and has his fingerprints on it. So thank you, Mr. Clark, as well, and Mr. Brewer. I'll move six B. Is it six? I don't see the number.
Yes.
Okay.
Six B.
And six B one, I think, as well.
All right. It takes us to item 21, the request from Anthony Holt to rezone property in the vicinity of 20 East Eighteenth Street from N1 Light Industrial to limited M2 Heavy Industrial to allow use of a portion of the property for outdoor storage of inoperable construction equipment. Subject to conditions, the setting the date of hearing is going to be March 25th of 13. Mr. Moore.
Thank you, mayor. Spoke with Anthony Holt, and he indicated that he's scheduled to be out of town on the 25th, and would like us to schedule this for April 8th instead.
Is there anybody in the audience to speak on this? Seeing none, the request here is to change the date of the hearing from the 25th day of March to April 8th.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions? That's the motion.
I'll move 21.
Seven yes?
All right. Takes 25. 25 is on the issuance of a certificate of appropriateness for the demolition of Norden Hall, 709 East Locust Street. The date of that hearing is 3/25 of 13. Council communication number 13-119. Mrs. Hensley.
This is actually in Ryan's ward. However, there has been a lot of contact and discussion with the group that was here at the last council meeting on the Lunsford Home that was demolished over on Tonawanda Drive. And this is a building that they had identified. What I would ask is, is that we have ongoing meetings, or at least set up another meeting, and not move forward with the certificate of appropriateness, or since we're setting the date of hearing, maybe the appropriate step would be to continue that until we've had the meetings that take place. Because I understand that there is a developer that has actually had a plan, that now that there's been a letter of denial from the Landmark Committee for the demolition permit, I think there might be more willingness by SHIPO and the other people at the state to look at actually splitting off the row house and allowing that to be moved, because there's a lot of interest in moving that. It's my understanding the city also has a lot that had been identified in discussions with economic development that is in East Village that would be a possible site. The issue with moving the entire building, from what I've learned today, is that because of the topography, one building is about four feet higher than the other building, therefore, they wouldn't be able to move both buildings, and that's why they just want to save the row house, and they're not concerned with the other piece of it. So lots of discussion, lots of possibilities there, and I'll go ahead and move item 25 to set the date of hearing. Go ahead.
Just a suggestion, Mrs. Hensley, council members, perhaps what you do is continue this item till the next time, not set the date of hearing. Let us come back with a game plan, and then you can proceed from there. If there's a plan that doesn't require demolition, you probably don't even need to go through the process.
Are you comfortable with that?
I'm comfortable. Yeah. I'm fine.
Okay. So we will not set the date of hearing.
I'm going to continue.
We'll continue it. Okay.
Seven yes?
All right. I need to go back and note to everybody that the board commission neighborhoods item on here, which is item 14, which is approving the appointments to the Skywalk Committee, has been withdrawn and will be heard at another date. That completes the consent agenda and moves us to item 33. Now, prior to us starting that, we have a very special moment here, and I'm glad you all have been waiting for this for a long time. But we have a, one of our own has reached a very important point in his career. He has been with the city now for 15 years, service on our city council, and that is our own Chris Coleman. So, Mr. Coleman, if you would come forward.
Wow.
We have a 15-year bin for you. Takes us to item 33, which is ordinance is first consideration. Item 33 is amending Chapter 114 of the Remissible Code regarding traffic regulation changes as follows. This is council communication number 13-110. A is a passenger loading and unloading area, Park Street between Seventh and Eighth Street. B, parking restrictions, the east side of East Seventh between East Locust and East Walnut. And C is the parking restrictions and traffic restrictions removal related to former Walnut Street Transit Mall. Anybody here to speak to any of those? Seeing none, could we have a motion? Item 33.
I'll move item 33, A, B, and C, and request the non-prepublished waiver, the second and third readings.
Item 34 is a council request is from Christine Hensley to speak regarding specialty sign, street sign toppers for the Sherman Hill neighborhood. Mrs. Hensley.
I don't know. I'm looking to see if Ryan Howell is in the audience, and I'm not seeing him. Sherman Hill has requested, and they want to move forward with a placement of street sign toppers that would designate Sherman Hill as a historic neighborhood. And I would just like to refer this to the appropriate departments here at the city, city manager, traffic and transportation, legal, so that they can move forward. I know that there's been discussion regarding the SMID, and they're working to renew the SMID. They also know that this currently does not meet the criteria as outlined in their existing SMID. So they're looking at redoing the SMID, tying it in with the downtown SMID, and I'm not sure if they're actually going to be looking, they're looking at expanding their historic license in Sherman Hill, so they'll be looking at additional ways to fund this. The intent is, is that they would pay for it, and ongoing maintenance would be a part of the SMID for these toppers. So that is what we're looking at, and I just want to make sure that it's moving forward, because they're eager to keep this going. So my motion is to refer it to city manager, legal, and traffic, to continue working with Sherman Hill.
Seven yes.
Seven yes.
Item 35 is a communication report from Ken Cockney from 2327 York Street to speak regarding lights on private snowplows. Ken?
Ken Cockney, 2327 York Street, Des Moines, Iowa 50316. I'm just maybe requesting the city council could maybe pass some kind of an ordinance for private snowplow, snowplow people to have the yellow light on top of their truck. When they don't, they just, sometimes they just come out of nowhere, and you don't know whether, you know, but sometimes they just come out behind something, and if they have a yellow light on, at least we'll know there, something's in the area. That's all.
Ken, are you a plow driver, or a concerned citizen?
No, just a concerned citizen.
Are we preempted by state law, Jeb?
As, I've not had a chance to look at that yet. My first reaction is that that may very well be the case, that the city may be preempted from regulating the use of emergency indicators by motor vehicles on public streets, and...
Well, certainly, I think, we'll...
We'll find out, sure.
Yeah, just the yellow light.
Yeah, we'll get an answer for you, and then if we are preempted, we'll direct you towards your state legislature.
Very good. Thank you very much. It's a great idea.
So the motion will be to refer to city legal for analysis and opinion.
Move.
All right. Item 36 has been withdrawn at the request of Mr. Peters. Takes us to item 41. Approving the selection of Holmes Murphy and Associates, James Swift, chairman, to provide employee benefit consulting for a period beginning on or about March 18th of 2013 through June 30 of 2018. Council communication number 13-122. City manager, any comment here?
Mayor and council, this is an extremely important piece of work for us. I would simply say, if you look at the changes in healthcare cost and its impact on organizations, that issue alone really ought to motivate us to want to get the best talent we can, and it's a very complicated area. We have great internal staff with James Wells that understands the issues well. But this resource is going to be imperative to have for us to make sure that we manage the cost effectively going over the next three years. We do recommend it to you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Question. The amount that we're recommending here, this is the cumulative amount through the time period we're talking about, because it's actually June, or right now through, I think it's actually 2018, correct?
Right. It says $74,000 per year. It says June 30th of 2018.
Okay. I guess I'm looking at the blue letter, and it was 3018.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, James Wells, what we would be looking for there is a, really, almost a monthly cost, based on an annual cost of 74,400 per year, so that we can start that work immediately, even next week, because we do have several benefit programs that are coming up for renewal this year, so we want Holmes Murphy to conduct those RFPs for us.
So how will they be paid, then? Are they going to be paid just a monthly amount based upon that 74,4?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. And so this is going to be the 74,4 per year for the duration of the contract through June 30 of 2018? Are there any inflationary?
No, that's for, that's for five years, for each year, yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Anybody in the audience, any comments?
I'll move.
Items move.
Seven yes?
Takes us to item 42, which is a collective bargaining agreement with the Des Moines Association of Professional Firefighters Local Number Four for the period July 1 through, July 1 of 13 through June 30 of 16. Council communication number 13-123. City manager, any comments?
Mr. Mayor, council members, we're pleased to bring this forward to you. When you had a discussion with us early on, you established some basic goals for this particular negotiation. I'm pleased that we've essentially met those. You talked about increasing contribution for health insurance. This gets a contribution that's up to 9.5%. There is a wellness program that's been built as part of the program, and we've ended up with a total compensation package that is very close to what the agreements were that were approved last year. You can see in the blue letter, we talked about the total cost averaging over the three-year period of the contract at a little over 2% a year. It does hit those targets, and I think it's been a very good process. They're always difficult to do these things. Our team did a great job, I think, in bringing the contract forward to you, and we do recommend it to you.
All right. Any comments?
I'll move it, and I congratulate our management team, but also the employees that make up the firefighters' union and their leadership. I think it's a feather in our cap that we can work together to resolve these issues and look forward for the next three-plus years on the same page. So I feel really good when we can negotiate our way to a conclusion on these.
All right. We've got a couple of minutes. We've got a couple of extra items. Laura, do you want to come up and speak to the first one? Item one on the extra agendas is approving the application to participate in the reinvest initiative. Would you want to quickly tell us what that's about?
Sure. Thanks, Mayor, County. Mayor, members of the city council, Laura Graham, city manager's office. The reinvest initiative is a new initiative which is in partnership with the Rockefeller Foundation to help communities take a look at finding new ways to further advance green infrastructure within, within the respective cities. This has come in light of a lot of cities recognizing the need for green infrastructure, but not necessarily being able to fund them the way they would like to. What this group would do is be, it's a competitive application that has no financial obligation on behalf of the city, that would allow us to work with experts in finance as well as in engineering to help develop potential policy recommendations for council to review, as well as working on the creation of public-private partnerships within the community to help advance that initiative. The application is due, it's a letter that's submitted from, from the mayor and council to this group, so they'll be making a selection here in the next few weeks, and we should hear back from them on that.
Thank you, Laura. And the cost to us is, there may be a match, but up to 300,000 to 500,000, is that what it is?
That's correct.
All right.
Can you clarify what you mean by "there may be a match"?
Well, it, the initiation was, I believe, from the, through USGBC with the Rockefeller Brothers Foundation that is looking for cities to partner with that are moving and working on some of the stuff like we are with EPA on Sixth Avenue and some of the other processes. They are actually going to move forward so that we can help finalize, as I understand, some of the initiatives that we have and are providing some money to, what, six or eight cities around the country. And so we have been nominated as one of those cities, and so we're going to see if they're willing to select us. Is that good?
Yes. I just might add that the 300,000 to 500,000 that the mayor is referencing is not an obligation of the city, but funding that this initiative would provide us for technical assistance. technical assistance.
Somebody want to move it?
I will move it. Thanks for bringing that forward.
Seven, yes?
Item 2 is approving a National League of Cities, City Leadership to promote blackmail achievement. And Tom, do you want to step up and quickly run through this program?
Mayor, Members of the Council. My name's Tom Slater, and I'm with State Public Policy Group, and I've been kind of asked to present today on behalf of this, it's really an application, a proposal application, which the National League of Cities will be, is making available to six cities across the United States around city leadership to promote blackmail achievement. It is a focus, if you will, on young African-American men from probably 16 through age 24, 25. You might ask, or you may not ask, why I'm here. I got a call, coincidentally, from an organization here that asked if I'd, if I'd pro bono help put this together and had a chance to have some visits about it. This proposal is due, believe it or not, March 22nd, and it would entail engaging city departments and key leaders, and I would like to think that go beyond the city and include other local governments, education, and a variety of other nonprofits, to provide an infrastructure of, that would allow African-American men to become a part of a leadership program. There are only six going to be awarded. I think it's fair to say that this is a, this is a very reasonable goal to develop some kind of an initiative around young African-American leaders. The, the result, if, if this is awarded to Des Moines, will allow that the National League of Cities will provide pretty technical assistance. There's no cash money involved in this. It is a commitment by the, by the city. It is a commitment by the National League of Cities also if they do this because they will spend considerable time putting this together. It, it, it will be necessary in a short period of time to identify some key leadership in the city as a contact, as well as bring together, which I, which may very well be pending, some of the key people that may make this successful in the application. That's what I got for now.
As, as we envisioned, I think the, the mayor makes the application to the National League of Cities, and then it, Rudy Sims, our Human Rights Director, will probably oversee city's participation in it. So if, if we are awarded.
Yeah, yeah. And, and it's, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a leadership program that requires the city to make the application, as the mayor indicated. It involves departments and the leadership of the city.
And I think it's our vision that we are going to have a meeting, get some folks together this week to, to discuss the opportunity.
Yeah, thank, thank you. I didn't, you know, I usually learned, when I used to work for a city, I'd never bring those things up unless the council already approved this, so. I, I, there's one pending. There's a meeting pending that, that the mayor has been helpful in, in facilitating, putting it together hopefully for Thursday at the urban campus. And the idea is to bring a lot of these people together and, quite frankly, engage them to see what their respective organizations and agencies may be willing to do. And I forgot, we're from state, I'm from State Public Policy Group. We're a company that does work in policy and organizational development and project management. So we will try to facilitate this and put this together and try to gather up the statistics and what's required to put this together and have it to the National League of Cities by the 22nd. This meeting, as the mayor indicated, will help us launch content for writing this. It hopefully will allow us to access data that's going to be required. I think it's important to note that in this application that the data, data information is going to be important, and measuring success is going to be important as, as this leadership program. We want to know where we started and where we moved to, so that's a part of it. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. I'll tell everybody else that also I think it's an opportunity for us to reach out to National League of Cities. As you know, we have not participated with them as robustly as we have in the past, and so it, it gives us an opportunity to think of some of the ways that we might reengage on a more regular basis with the National League. Mrs. Hensley?
And I'm glad you brought that up, Mayor, because we're currently not members. That was one of the budget cuts that we made, so I guess before there was a lot of time spent, I, I think we need to at least ask the question, will we?
The application itself has a, are you a member or are you not on it? And it doesn't disqualify us for, is not being a member.
Okay.
Mrs. Hensley, it doesn't put us probably in the top 20%.
I would think so.
But I would think that it will allow the conversation maybe to begin, begin with them, and, and at the same time, doing this, at least organizationally, may be of value to itself. So there may be, come out of this, a document that would allow people to think about this very important issue for the city and go from there.
Okay.
But you're, you're right, Chris.
All right. I'd like to move this, Mayor. Okay?
Seven, yes?
All right, let's.
You did so good, they're going to send you back next time you have to talk.
What?
You did so good, they're going to send you back next time.
Just cruise right through. All right, let's now go back to Item 37, which is our first hearing item. Let's note that the hearings open at 5:07. Item number 37 is a proposed amended and restated urban renewal development agreement with Kemmon Industries, Inc. on the vacation and sale of city-owned real estate in the vicinity of Southeast 20th to Southeast 22nd Street, north of Scott Avenue for the expansion of home office, research, and manufacturing facilities. Council Communication Number 13-124. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration of the ordinance above, and the waiver is requested by the applicant, and it requires six votes. Is there anyone in the audience to speak to this item?
I'll move 37A and B.
Seven, yes?
Item 38, on the urban renewal agreement for the sale of land for private redevelopment with East Village Growth Partners, LLC, to develop disposition parcel number 02-1A in the metro center urban renewal area north of East Locust and west of East Fourth Street. Council Communication Number 13-120. Is there anybody in the audience to speak to this item?
I'll just move, before I move 38, I'll mention that they're on a very tight timeframe in the tax credits if they come down in May or whenever they are. Very good, very good project, and look forward to seeing it completed. Move 38 for the best board in the entire city.
It's like everything's happening in your board.
Lot of action out there this, this meeting.
Yep.
Yes, I move 38.
Seven, yes?
Item 39, on the conveyance of city-owned real estate located in the vicinity of U.S. Highway 65 in the Skunk River to Polk County Conservation Board pursuant to a 28E agreement. Council Communication Number 13-111. Is there anybody in the audience to speak to this item? Seeing none?
Seven, yes?
Item 40, the Grays Lake Northwest Shoreline Retaining Wall. Resolution approving the plan, specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, and designation of the lowest responsible bidder as J&amp;K Contracting, LLC. Jeremy Feldman, President, $49,920. Council Communication Number 13-117. A is the approval of the contract and the bond and permission to sublet. Is there anybody here to speak to this item?
I'll move Item 40, 48.
Six, yes, one, no.
All right, let's note that the hearings ended at 5:10. Takes us now to extra item number three, which is request from Mayor, County to discuss Mayor Pro Tem's participation in the, in the scheduling of items for upcoming City Council workshops. I talked to Mr. Coleman about this, and we have worked on this before, and I talked with the city manager, and I think that, Mr. Coleman, they're looking forward to your participation, and I would suggest that city council members work with council and through our Mayor Pro Tem to, as we work important items through on our workshop schedule. Any comments, Mr. Coleman?
No, but I, to the end of keep making sure that we get input from everybody, at the bottom of each of our workshop agendas are issues that are hanging out there, and I would sure appreciate any feedback any of you have. It's on the website, or, or if you took the agenda this morning, there's probably 12 or 14 things on there right now, and there might be others. And I, I do recognize that sometimes things pop up that we didn't know we needed to talk about until a couple of weeks beforehand, so we'll have to have some flexibility, but it would be nice to make sure we're addressing the things that are most critical.
All right, and hopefully when those things do pop up, you'll get in touch with us and get whatever input we can give you.
Yeah.
When fresh item shows up. Anybody move?
I'll move.
Could I just make a quick comment as well? I think it would be helpful both for the public as well as ourselves to have some information on some of the items prior to the workshop itself so that we can be prepared and the public can be prepared. Some of the items are fairly nondescript in the, in the agenda, so it might be help, for example, two weeks ago, we had Chief Bradshaw discussing public safety, and I think that, that was a topic that probably interested a number of people, but the description wasn't necessarily clear. I mean, it described it well, but it wasn't perfectly clear to people reading it. So maybe having a brief synopsis or something along those lines for the public to be a little more aware of.
Great idea.
What those workshops are about.
Great idea.
Seven, yes?
Item 4, recommendation from Councilmember Christine Hensley to appoint John Tenpass to the excess advisory board seat 6 for a three-year term commencing June 15th, 2012 to expire June 15th, 2015. Anyone here to discuss that item?
I'll move, Item 4.
Seven, yes?
Could we have a motion to adjourn as City Council at 5:13 and reconvene as Board of Health? It's been moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. We now sit as the Board of Health. Item 1 is approving the legal department to proceed with court actions seeking authority to abate the public nuisance at the following locations. Item 1A, which is 2615 Center Street, has been withdrawn by Community Development, and Item 1C, 1801 7th Street, has also been withdrawn by Community Development. So our lone item for this evening is Item B, which is a property located at 1241 6th Avenue. It's a main structure, and again, it's to approve the legal department to proceed with court actions seeking authority to abate that property. Is there anybody here to speak to that item? You going to speak?
No.
Okay. All right, seeing none, could we have a motion? Item's been moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Could we have a motion to adjourn?
Move. Wow.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We sit adjourned. Thank you all for attending this evening.